Director Subcommittee. I'm going to call the meeting to order. First are the approval or correction of the minutes of June 13th. Anyone have any changes or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion in the second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Now we have the minutes of September 12th. Any discussion amendments or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent items are three and four. Does anyone have any need for further information?
I would like item number four.
Okay. Do you want a staff presentation?
Yeah, that would be perfect.
Okay. You want to do that now or at the next meeting? All right, let's do it now. It's that wonderful time where we get to renew our clocks agreement. Oh.
Sure. Move item number three.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries.
So I just have a question on this. I wanted to know, I don't know if you have the slide of the cost. I don't have the PowerPoint or what the cost would be, the increase, I guess.
The increase would be to 5%?
So the increase would be to 5% of about 4.7 million. In the past, we had a floor, which meant that at times they were paying around 5 or just over, or just under 5%.
Okay, and that cost goes to? Who ends up paying for the cost?
So Vice Mayor, the 5% fee, it's actually currently in the licenses, 4.7%. And there was a minimum amount, a minimum of about 9.7 million per year that the, that was needed to be paid by Cox to the city, and that goes to the general fund. So what we understand is that Cox has included a line in the, on the customers' bills for collection of that fee. So that fee is, goes to the consumer, the customers, and then is collected on behalf and paid to the city. So that's, right now, it's 4.7%, so there's a minimum amount of 9.7 million, which has exceeded the 4.7%. And so it's a little bit complicated because since our current license was enacted, the state law changed. And the state law placed a cap on the licensing fee at 5%, but it also prohibited contracts from containing any type of minimum amount in the contract. So that minimum amount of 9.7 million can no longer be there. So the, we expect that we'll probably get about the same amount of revenue each year, even at the higher rate of 5%. But just because that floor can no longer be there, and that $9.7 million is what we've been collecting, because that was that minimum floor amount that we've been using. And now, now it'll just be the straight-up 5%. So I know it sounds a little bit complicated.
So we've been collecting, or we've collected 9.7 million. We've been collecting 1.7 million for the purpose of?
The 9.7 million is the, the fee that the city charges for Cox to be able to use the city's right-of-way.
So in order for, we charge Cox for them to use the city right-of-way?
Correct.
All right. That's where, and then the cost is then placed on the consumer?
That's what Cox has done is.
I'm just asking if that's what, how it gets paid?
Correct.
My question is, how does, how does the 1.7 million get paid? Who pays that, I guess?
It's, it's 9.7 million, but it's.
9.7.
It's the, it's the customers of Cox.
That's what I wanted on record. Thank you.
While you're discussing, this is similar to anyone who has a landline, because the telephone companies used to use our right-of-ways. Isn't that true?
The, so the, it's, they would have their own license with the city, but yes, so they would have negotiated to use the city's right-of-way. This is, this, this one in particular is a cable TV license.
Right.
And so it's a little bit different, but yeah, it's the same concept.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions, some motion?
Move approval.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All in, motion carries. Items five through eight are for information only. Does anyone have any questions they wanted to ask?
No.
Nope? Okay. In that case, we will go to item nine.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. Joining us at the table are Maria Hyatt, Public Transit Director, and Ken Kessler, Deputy Public Transit Director. The presentation today is to provide the Subcommittee with information and the staff findings regarding a proposal for the city to cover the full cost of transit passes for youth in the city of Phoenix. It's important to note, before we start, that the city provides a significantly reduced fare for youth in the existing program. In fact, compared with other large cities where youth rely heavily on transit, our reduced fares compare very favorably. And so Maria will cover a little bit more about that in her presentation. The request also comes with a substantial cost, a financial impact, one which the city of Phoenix does not have the resources to cover without negatively impacting the existing transit service that Phoenix residents rely heavily upon. It also creates some legal challenges that could create issues with our substantial federal funding that the city receives from the Federal Transit Administration that would be on top of the financial impact that I already mentioned. The city does offer an excellent program that the Phoenix Union High School District capitalizes on, that other schools may not be aware of. And so we believe this is a great opportunity to change that. And so Maria is going to describe these issues more in detail. Maria?
Thanks, Mario. Councilwoman Williams, members of the Subcommittee. At your June 7th formal meeting, you gave us direction to go back and do some more work and do further data and analysis. And so today, we're coming back to you to provide you with that information that you requested, and also provide you with options and recommendations. So we had a team of folks who assisted us. We had Brad Holm and Ted Mariscal from the Law Department, Tim Valencia with Youth and Education Office, and Katia Idalgo from the Governmental Relations Programs that helped us do this research and analysis. So I'm just going to recap where we were when, at the June 7th policy, or formal meeting. So we talked at that time about the impact of lost revenues and the reimbursements we would need to do to the other cities for when a youth would ride from another, start their travel in another city, we're required to pay that back. So we've also had additional time to firm up those numbers, as well as look at the additional impacts of having free youth fairs, if that is what is approved. What we do know is that in, when, when we did the 19C Free Circulator on 19th Avenue during light rail construction, we saw a 45% increase in ridership on 19th Avenue during that time period because of the free revenues. So in looking at that, what we felt was that we also needed to address what our existing impacts are. So today, we have overcrowding on 22 of our 33 routes. And so if you added additional riders from youth riding to and from school during those peak times when we are the busiest, we believe that we needed to add additional service to address that for all of our passengers. The other piece of it is that the youth petition talked about having this service be available to schools. And there are quite a few schools in the Valley, in Phoenix, that do not have bus transit, public transit adjacent to them. We've also included that in here to provide an equity for all of our passengers. So youth fairs was not contemplated in Proposition 104. So when we were putting together the plan, this was, we considered all fairs as a revenue source to help us fund the entire Prop 104 item. So in the ballot, the things that are in the ballot, we would not be able to accomplish all of them if this was approved. What we would look at is a need to eliminate or impact two to six routes, major routes in Phoenix. Or another option would be to cut back on the new service hours that you all approved last fiscal year. And what we found is that even though it's a benefit to our youth to be able to ride at a cost picked up by the city of Phoenix, it also has a negative impact on our existing riders by those cuts that would be required in order to make, to balance the budget, the Proposition 104 Transportation 2050 ballot item. So at the, the June 7th formal meeting, Council asked for a variety of things. And so we're going to cover them briefly today. So one of them was potential for discrimination in any legal issues, looking at income-based programs, state school funding, looking at other sources of funds and/or grants that could offset this type of program, looking further at our Platinum Pass program and whether outreach was to schools was a viable option, and also to provide back options. So when you get federal funds, lots of rules come with it. So we had, we found several that really impacted what we're talking about today. So one of them is that the federal government says that you cannot act like a school bus system when there are private operators who can do the job for the school bus. And what we did find in our research is that more than 20 public and charter schools are doing exactly that. They are hiring private contractors to provide their school bus service. And if you do violate any of these federal rules, they can sanction you. We receive $30 million annually from the federal government, and that's just Phoenix's portion. If you violate the rules, especially since Phoenix is the designated recipient, they could actually sanction the funds that are received for the region, not just the city of Phoenix. And we also looked at the equity issues. So let's say I live in Phoenix, and I go to the same school as Ken, and Ken lives in Tempe, and he, oh, Tempe is not a good choice, Peoria. And we go to the same school, and we're in the same class, and I got to school for, based on a free youth pass, but he had to pay. Those would be equity issues that could be problematic. So another thing that the Council asked us to look at was the income-based programs. So Valley Metro and the city of Phoenix affirmed years ago that we wanted to have a reduced, which is a half-price, a $1 fare for our youth. This is not something that's required by the federal government. The federal government requires a reduced fare for ADA passengers and senior passengers, but they leave it up to transit authorities on how they want to address the others. And, and the Phoenix region made that decision years ago, that it should be $1. But we also looked at the income-based programs, and while we were at it, we also looked at those cities that have the reduced fare like we do. And so what we found was that our existing half-price fare is very comparable to both income-based programs in LA, Seattle, and Tucson. The interesting thing was, we found in San Francisco, you'll see the dash, dash, so San Francisco receives $6.8 million from a Google annually to offset the cost of their program for youth. And we just need to get Google here, if we can work on that, along with Amazon. So one of the things that we wanted to show is all of the school districts that cover Phoenix. And there are 29 of them, and as you can see from this map, the gray area is the city of Phoenix. So many of these school districts cover Phoenix, but they also cover other cities. So that gets back to that equity issue that we talked about earlier, where you have students from multiple cities going to the same school with different fare rules, potentially. Oh crap, oh, let's see. We also looked at where all of the public schools within Phoenix are. There's 283 of them, and as you can see from the map, they're evenly distributed throughout the city. And the same goes with the charter schools. There are 108 of them, and again, spread throughout the city. What we did find with charter schools, it's kind of the no-brainer, they do not have the boundaries that public schools have. So tracking the transportation corridors for their students is very difficult, because they could be coming from anywhere in the Valley to get to that charter school. So it's a little bit easier when you're looking at the public school, because you know the boundaries, or they have a voucher to get into that school. So then we also, at your request, we looked at state funding. How are the schools and charter schools funded? So both, all public schools, public and charter schools, receive appropriations from the state for their services. So public schools last year in Phoenix, the Phoenix schools, received about $9.8 billion. And they spent $86 million of that on transportation expenditures, which is approximately eight tenths of a cent, eight tenths, eight tenths, I can't say that, eight tenths of a percent of their total appropriations. So in comparison, charter schools spent one-tenth of a percent of their total appropriations on transportation. So now we needed to look at how it worked. Oops. So how school districts versus public transit really work. And so we did an example of Thunderbird High School. So what this map shows in the yellow area is Thunderbird High School attendance area. And really what we found is that public transit and school buses have very different purposes. Our routes are on the major streets, and that, you know, applies for almost all areas of Phoenix. School buses, in pink, travel all throughout the neighborhoods in order to capture and bring the youth to the schools. And depending on where you live, could mean that I have, I live right on the major street, for me, it would be easy to get to the school. But again, Ken lives, you know, sock in the middle, and he's going to have a much more difficult time in getting a farther walk to get to the bus, a one- or a two-seat ride potentially to get to that bus. Another thing that you asked us for is to look at opportunities to, for alternative funds to offset youth fairs. And Governmental Relations helped us with that research. And what they found is that there are not any grants that are sufficient or large enough for it, and most of them are a one-time opportunity. So schools are getting funds for field trips, for trips to museums, and, you know, other types of things. But there is an opportunity through the tribal grants that they could apply in partnership with the city for funds. Tribal grants ranged from $2,500 to $300,000 is their maximum amount that was awarded last year. But that $300,000 was over three years. And again, I think another opportunity is an Amazon or a Google to help, like San Francisco, in helping us with offsetting our funds. You also asked us to look at the Platinum Pass program. So this is an existing program provided by the city of Phoenix through Valley Metro. And what the Platinum Pass program does is it allows us to have an employer, whether it's a school, a company, a government agency, they come and they can get a Platinum Pass. And so all it takes is 20 active riders to get the Platinum Pass. And what that does for them, it gives them a reasonable number. They always know what their number, their cost is going to be for transportation, or something less. So when we looked at Phoenix Union High School District, so Phoenix Union High School District is one of our Platinum Pass program members. And in fact, all 16 of the Phoenix Union High Schools use, are active users of our Platinum Pass program. So the advantage of the Platinum Pass program, the reduced fare portion that would be eligible for the youth, it, the maximum cost per month would be $32. So for instance, Ken rides it eight times in a month, and the school's only going to get charged $8 for his ride. But I ride it all the time, at 40 times per month, they're only going to get charged $32 for me, because that's the capped rate. So that's the advantage. But Phoenix Union High School, what their experience is, is that their average Platinum Pass cost is $21 per month. So we've gone through this pretty fast, but you have seven pages of analysis in your, in your home packets. So now we'll go through the options. So after research, after reviewing the data and research, we're coming back to you with three options. The first one is to cover all costs and lost revenue for youth pass. What this would do is, we would require additional bus service to address peak overcrowding throughout the system. Also to provide new service in areas where we do not have bus service today, Councilwoman Williams' area is one of those, and Councilwoman Gallego also has that. And also to manage a pass program. These costs range, and so we provided that range at $11.8 to $24.2 million. Our second option is to maintain the reduced fares for youth, six to 18, which is a dollar per ride, and also continue the program, which is children under five, or five and under are free with a paid adult. Our third option is targeted outreach on the Platinum Pass program and continuation of the existing fare program. And our recommendation is targeted outreach to charter and public schools for the Platinum Pass program, as this has been a very effective program for other schools that have been involved. And we believe that if we go out and educate the schools, we can help them with controlling their transportation costs as an option for students.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Maria, I know you and your staff, and legal, and education, and so many were involved in researching this, and I just want you to know, I really appreciate the depth you went to. You really did do a lot of research, and thank you for your recommendation. Does anyone have any questions, comments?
I do.
Vice Mayor?
There was a statement made about legal issues regarding the federal transit law prohibits all federally funded public transit entities from engaging in school bus operation. How does Tempe pay for this?
So Tempe has, they included it in their, their ballot item, their tax, and they provide that pass to any student who wants to apply, or actually, any child who wants to apply ages six to 18. They can, students can apply for the program either through their high schools or through the transit, the Tempe Transit Center.
And what does it cost them?
It costs them $395,000, of which $284,000 last year was lost revenue, and $111,000 was reimbursement to other cities, including Phoenix. And they have 16.7% of their youth who have a Tempe Platinum Pass.
So what I'm hearing is 16.7 of the youth use the Platinum Pass. By them using the Platinum Pass, does Tempe pay for the Platinum Pass? Who pays for the?
Tempe is responsible for reimbursing the region, so they get the lost revenue, revenue they would have received if they charged a fare, and they also have to reimburse all of the cities for any trips that occur in another city.
Okay. So it's, their lost revenue is 300?
Their lost revenue is almost $400,000.
So on the chart, that was, it's saying that the fare, yeah. Number one, it's saying that we would lose 24 million?
We had a range between $11.8 million and $24.2 million. That includes lost revenue and reimbursement to other cities, as well as the additional services. So the overcrowding on buses, extensions to areas that don't currently have buses, as well as administration of the pass.
Maria, go ahead.
Am I not answering the question correctly?
One of the things that we discussed was the fact that students going to school is the same time the commuters are taking the buses. So you have so many overcrowded buses now, you would have to add additional fleet? Isn't that true?
Correct. Otherwise, we would have, you know, the potential of leaving people behind, because there's just not another position to squish somebody in, in my technical terms.
Oh, no, 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 because it, mathematically, in my mind, and I'm sure in constituents' mind, Tempe is losing 400,000, and so.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Tempe, Tempe is losing 400,000 in fares and reimbursements, and they're reimbursing. They reimburse 16.7 kids, or students are using the Platinum Pass. So where is?
The difference?
The difference.
So Vice Mayor, that's an excellent question. So what we have is, we have more youth in Phoenix. So what we did was, the lowest number for the lost revenue, and for the $11.8 million is based on actual youth who ride in Phoenix today, based on Valley Metro's origin and destination study. So what we know is that today, if you took all of this, all of the youth that are riding today in Phoenix, that ret, lost revenue would be $7.5 million. We have a lot more youth in Phoenix. The highest estimate, that $18 million, is based on what we see as the ridership at Phoenix Union High School District. So Phoenix Union High School District has 38 pers, how much, 29% of their current students on a Platinum Pass. So we took that as the high end of what the potential could be, extrapolated that onto all youth in Phoenix, in that age group. I hope that made sense.
Okay. My second question is, is alternative funding. And I have some notes that existing formula funds are fully allocated on ongoing needs and programs. I would like a list of that allocation, and what needs and programs are going to.
Certainly, Madam Chair, Vice Mayor Pastor, we don't have that exact information, because there's quite a bit of detail to that. That would be, those funds are allocated in Merica Police Association and Government's Transportation Improvement Programs, or the MAGTIP, shows a five-year look at how all of the federal formula funds for transit are programmed. And, and we can certainly provide that to you, so you could see for the region where all those funds go to.
So we're talking region-wise now. We're not talking, when, when this statement is made, it's about region, and it's not about local, meaning city of Phoenix.
Correct. Phoenix gets a vast share of that, because we're the major transit entity in the region. But yes, those are regional funds allocated by MAG.
And then my third question is charter schools. My understanding, and if I'm understanding correctly, is that they receive funding for transportation and capital assistance. And it's up to them, or their area, their budget, to figure out how they will use that budget and provide transportation. But there is dollars, there are dollars allocated for transportation to the charter schools.
Madam Chair, Vice Mayor Pastor, what Tim Valencia, our Office of Youth and Education, indicated in his research is that that is correct, that they do receive funding. It is in a different way than public schools do, but they are eligible, transportation costs are an eligible use of that appropriation.
Okay. Because I think that's kind of where it started. So I think it's good to end it and say that there are dollars provided to the charter schools for transportation.
And we did see them use that for transportation.
And if not, those, those students that need, that are attending charter schools and not at public schools, but need a transportation, the public school is to provide that, that transportation to the charter. Am I correct?
For special needs students?
Oh, yes. Yes, Madam Chair, that is, that, and Vice Mayor Pastor, I'm sorry.
To go roundabout.
Yes, they are required under state statute to provide that transportation up to 20 miles. Yes.
Okay. Does anyone else?
Want to echo what Chairwoman Williams said about this council report. You guys did a really good job. Thank you so much for all the research that went into this. It was well-written, and it covered the wide variety of factors that we need to consider in making this decision. So thank you for all the time you put into this. We clearly took the citizen petition very seriously, and got a lot of great data, but from my perspective, it looks like the system we have right now has a lot of good tools that students can use, and we just need to make sure people are more aware of that. So I would move item three, option three.
Thank you. Councilmen, did you have some comments? For a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I, from the north area, the fact that it would prohibit service when we get calls every day for transportation, and why aren't the bus routes going up north and going better east to west? I am very hesitant to go forward with anything like this. I also have some qualms about bus stops are not located close to schools. And it's a crazy world out there, and I certainly would not want to have the potential endangerment of any child riding a city bus, nor are we quite aware of everyone who's riding a bus. I mean, I just think the. I mean, I just think the potential there and the liability is pretty frightening to me. I agree with three. I think we provide an option that's very viable. It works for Phoenix Union, and I think that other schools are more than welcome to take advantage of that, providing their service in their area. So, I will support the motion.
Can I just make one comment about Phoenix Union? It's all kids who qualify for free and reduced lunch and who live a certain distance from the school, approximately one mile or more. Do they get reimbursed, or do they, can they receive a Platinum Pass? Anybody that lives close enough to the school does not receive a Platinum Pass, and so I want to make that clear, because in our meeting, we're saying all Phoenix Union students are able to receive it, and they're not. It's only those that are, that qualify for a certain program and that are, there's a distance away from the school. So, I just don't want kids then all of a sudden going to their school saying, hey, we want a Platinum Pass. So, there are boundaries or limitations around it. So, thank you.
As part of the motions, are we to deny the petition?
At this point, the action doesn't, doesn't need to tie back to the petition, because the council took action on the petition, and this is simply related to the referral back to the subcommittee.
Thank you. We have a motion. No further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries. Thank you so much, and please tell your partners. Thank you. I think you just get to stay there.
I do get to stay here.
Talk about shade.
All right, so Maria, do you want to, all right. So, I'm really excited by this one, as I was excited about youth fares also, but we are bringing up our three ASU student interns for this project, and once we can get the PowerPoint up, and it's pretty big, but we'll, you'll see exactly why I'm so excited about this option, as Ethan puts up the thing. So, I'd like to first introduce our interns. So, we have Derek Smoker, Ethan Foucher, and Dan Duquette, and so they're all three seniors at ASU in the School of Industrial Design, and I'm sure there's a fancier title than that, that they've got. But here is the reason why I'm so excited about talking to you today. These are our bus stops. They provide a very important need, which is to provide shade for our passengers, but I have long thought that can we find a way to provide that shade at a cost-effective level while still providing an amenity, something that really says something about our city and adds to what our environment looks like versus this. And I shouldn't speak bad, but this one's nice and pink. We have several of them. I love the one right across from my building in front of the federal courthouse over on First Avenue in Van Buren, and that one's very pink. And we have an example of our, of our advertising shelter. So, what we really wanted to do was to look to see if there was a way to build a better mousetrap. Could we find a cost-effective way to really provide an amenity that addressed our needs? In Phoenix, it's hot, you know, the sun is hitting at you at eight o'clock in the morning, it's hitting at you at five o'clock at night when you're waiting for the bus, and so we needed to be creative, especially for those west-facing needs. So, we worked with the ASU as a great partner on this, and we did a competition, of which we had freshmen, juniors, and graduate students, all in the school, who had the opportunity to apply and put together their, their ideas for it. And we had 75 students, about 15 groups, who participated in this, and these three, as well as an additional student who is not able to be here today, Erlin, or the ones who won, because they are incredibly creative and talented folks. And so, we're going to go through a quick video, hopefully, that we put together to document this process. And if it doesn't work, we can move forward.
Are we having technical difficulties?
All right, we, you know what? We will move forward, because it has me doing a lot of hand motions, of which I'm very embarrassed about.
If, if it, if it does work at some point, I'd love to see the video.
Absolutely. All right. So, I'd like to introduce, as I mentioned, our students, and they are going to talk to you about their process. Dan, you up first? You want to put on the mic? So, this is really their first presentation, and they did it to their Citizens Transportation Commission. We're kind of putting them through the wringer on this, and they are doing an incredible job. So, Dan?
Hi, I'm Dan. Thanks for having us. This is actually like really exciting.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Thank you. So, we're industrial designers. What we do is, we basically bring the ideation process to a project, and that includes sketching, which is the way we get our ideas out, but visually, so everyone knows what we're thinking opposed to just words. We also do research. We do modeling with online programs as well, where we can also render those to make them look lifelike. We also do modeling, hand modeling, or handmade modeling, I should say, and also, we can use machines such as like 3D printers or laser cutters as well to make those models. And we brought our skills to TY Lynn, which was who we interned for, and the city as well, where we just kind of worked as partners, where we were told shade was the number-one thing that we were looking to do, while also make the bus stops look a lot better aesthetically, and just something that the city can be proud of. And I'll pass it over to...
Hey, Dan, before you go, do you want to talk about the ADA process, too?
Oh, yes. ADA was very big on everything that we designed for. It was one point where we were sleeping and thinking about ADA in our sleep. We want everyone to have a great experience with the bus stop, and that includes people with disabilities and such. So, every, every factor that you see in our design, ADA is number one in that, as well as shade. So, we really wanted to give not just the user, but also the city's choice for their design and really make a modular bus stop. So, going off of that, we wanted to create a system that you can actually move and place these panels differently depending on how, what direction the bus stop faces. So, that's the city's choice. The rider then gets to choose, depending on what time of day, this panel's in the center, so they could be on either side, depending on what side the sun's on, or use the, this outcove that we designed to really take advantage of every angle of shade. In the design process, I tried to take inspiration from like a sundial. So, sundials, they always have shade somewhere around them, something like that, somewhere around the bus stop, there's always going to be shade. We talked about seating as well. We're very aware of the issues with longer benches and people sleeping on them, so we wanted to possibly design just like a two-foot wide seat, or something that isn't going to be slept on or laid out on, even with the vandal bars. People still find a way, they'll put stuff in it and still sleep on it. So, one of the things that I was kind of proud of was our estimate in cost was 8,800, which is lower than what the city's currently paying with, which is about 9,700, I believe. So, that was, you know, who doesn't love a cheaper bus stop?
Be in politics soon.
Cost to the taxpayer was definitely a big part of our design as well, because we, we know that we could have designed, you know, crazy organic shapes, but we talked a lot with manufacturing during the process to make sure that things were possible to be manufactured, they weren't too expensive, and, and that they would still look good. And using this flexible kit of parts system, you can add, subtract pieces, and we actually have a smaller T-section like this that could be a standalone or in addition to, to the structure here, for, for areas with small rideaway, or just really low ridership, but they, we still want to put shade there. That is a four-by-four, four-foot by four-foot structure that you could turn depending on which way the sun is going to be the hottest. And we also developed a deluxe shelter, which with the deluxe, we use the same semicircle structure, and in the middle, that structure right there is actually just half of the semicircle, so a quarter circle. So, all of those parts from the kit of parts will go into making this deluxe structure. We sort of developed the deluxe structure to sort of provide a new option. You know, there's three different types of roofs you can add to the structure, choose between those, and we just wanted to create something that you would use for possibly, you know, areas where you would want to add a flare to the street. Another thing we looked at was, instead of seats, we have leaning bars like you see in the middle panel, and we also have integrated seats in the curvature of the structure, if you never needed a seat. You obviously wouldn't be able to lay on it or sleep on it, but it provides adequate seating for people that may not be able to walk very far, you know? And another big thing here, if we were to develop this concept further, would be that you would actually be able to rotate the panels on an axis, and then bolt them down depending on the location of the structure and how the sun is hitting it, so you'd be able to change the position to maximize that shade. And, yeah, we're still developing this concept. The standard was really the one we've developed and got the contract for first, so this would be a in-the-future kind of process for this one.
So, our next steps really are to continue the evaluation of the deluxe shelter, and it sounds, it sounds so fabulous, deluxe shelter, but let me explain what, why we went with two potential designs. So, obviously, our standard shelter is the one we're moving forward with, but a couple of years ago, we were meeting with the Roosevelt Row District, who, they were, you know, looking at enhancing their street and their area, and they came to us and asked if they could have an upgraded bus stop, something that really said something about their neighborhood in some way. And at that time, I had nothing to give them. You know, the only thing, option we had was, you know, if you've seen, we have through the percent for arts, there are several arts bus shelters located throughout the city, but that is a different program with a different funding source, and didn't give me that flexibility to do something different in those areas where somebody wanted to pay the difference between what our standard shelter cost is and something better, or we have parts of the town, of the city where city council might want us to do something more. So, we're going to continue to refine that deluxe shelter and cost it out, because at this point, we do not have that. But our next steps are to continue the structural engineering analysis on the standard and the deluxe, construct a prototype, and then, once the prototype is up and out there, and we can see that it works and everything meets all of our needs, then we would release a bid in 2018 for shelter manufacturing. So, our recommendation today, oh, I just need to mention that the Citizens Transportation Commission, they had a couple of concerns about this, not concerns, but one of the things that they were very focused all the way through is that shade piece and the ADA piece, and our interns did a great job of addressing that. We did indicate to the CTC that we were not moving forward with the deluxe until we had a cost factor, so that's not part of what we're asking for today. What we're asking for is your approval of an improved standard bus shelter design, which is the kit of parts, to provide more shade for riders in collaboration with our Arizona State University Institute for Design and Arts.
Very impressive. Thank you very much for all your effort and design, and you are very capable young men. You're going to do very well in the future. I have a couple of questions. Is there a place on there to sell ads?
Oh, yes, Madam Chair. There, there is an option to provide ads on, as included, yes.
And then, I know that they are, RPTA is upgrading their shelters for electronic notices? Does meet that standard?
It does, and in fact, we have brought all of the cities, including Valley Metro and all of our, you know, all of the cities around, to look at this, to see if they also want to partner with us on this. The advantage of the kit of parts is that you can customize it. You can change the roof a bit, you can change the colors, you can change the perforations. So, something that would bring down all of our costs, but allow them to also use this and buy off of a contract is something that we feel is very beneficial.
I love the colored one. Is the video?
Yes.
Okay, we all, we'll see the video. We hope.
Arizona State University design students are using their skills to throw some much-needed shade at Phoenix bus riders.
It's hot in Phoenix, so having this partnership with ASU and the School of Industrial Design, we're able to get some incredible designs that really address the need of our passengers by providing that shade while also providing an amenity for our community.
It's the good kind of shade.
Well, it's been exciting creating something to help Phoenix bus riders have a more comfortable transit experience.
This collaboration between the City of Phoenix and ASU Industrial Design Program is a great opportunity for our students to show their talent and skills. We train them to see problems in the world, and they translate them into tangible solutions that benefit everyone.
Students also get to network and present ideas to other cities around the valley. Phoenix Transit has more than 30 designs bearing its shape, look, and use. This is the result of the students' hard work during this three-month internship.
The experience and knowledge from this project is something I can take with me directly as I start my design career.
Real-world experience and so much more.
Well, I think the best part about this internship was that it gave us a deliverable. We can point at a bus stop and say, I helped design that.
The final bus stop design will be put into production and hit some Phoenix bus stops later this year, and that's some good shade our riders can live with.
I'd like to give kudos, sorry about that, to Brenda Yanez. That's one big kudo.
Brenda Yanez did a great job before she left us and went to Public Works as a promotion. She abandoned us, but she was really critical. This was her, her baby, and she put it together and did an incredible job. Thanks, Brenda.
Very nice.
Good job, Brenda.
Want to make questions, comments?
No, I just, I'm inspired. It's exciting to see creatives take part in this process. That's what it's all about. This is everyone's city, and you are clearly very, very talented, and I know your, your heart obviously is in this, and this product is going, will help a lot of people, people you've never met before. I think it's, it's inspiring, but I hope it's also gratifying for you, and I know it is, but you'll be able to drive by one of these bus stops or get off a bus at one of these bus stops, and, you know, I mean, I know you're all very young, but perhaps, you're probably thinking of starting a family. Your kids can see something that has your fingerprints on it. It's pretty, pretty exciting, so thank you for stepping up. Thank you for putting your heart into this. It's important for, for all of us, for a lot of people, and a great job.
Councilwoman?
Want to echo what the councilman said. Thank you for your hard work on this and great design. I love, it has a cool urban feel to it that will look great in our downtown, but I think it could also work in some of the outlying areas of our city. So I think it's a good color combination that will blend in well with our community. Our existing bus stops have been a pain point for some of our residents. They complain that they shade at high noon, but that most people don't commute at high noon. And so this looks like it'll provide good shade at more traditional commuting hours in addition to high noon. So thank you for thinking about when people will really be using it and coming up with a great plan for us. ASU has been a wonderful partner for ours at the city, and this is another successful collaboration. Thank you to the Transit Department for listening to our community when they said our existing bus stops aren't meeting our needs. We can go out and do better. My one question, you touched a little bit, I think Dan maybe on the materials, but in terms of graffiti, we've looked at this material and this is something that would be unlikely to be impacted by spray paint?
Uh, yes, we, we, that, since that is a critical, um, feature of it, um, we do look at that especially with our paint coatings, um, and how easy it is to clean that off. Um, and the prototype also will help us test that just to ensure. But we will use standard paint, um, that we, you know, that is used regularly throughout the industry.
Wonderful, thank you. Well, thank you for your hard work on behalf of our community.
Hello, good job. I'm sure you guys are excited to see this happening, even though right now you're really stressed and not showing the smile, so. Uh, I get it. Question, is heat resistant? Um, the material that you're choosing or possibly will, will use, uh, how, how does it wear in a hundred and ten, um, temperature? And would I want to sit there at a hundred and ten if, uh, the seat is pretty hot? So.
So, uh, to answer that question, uh, earlier in the presentation, we talked about reflective coatings on the roof. And, uh, with this prototype, uh, that reflective coating, we're going to be taking temperature, um, analysis to see if, uh, the, we can use coatings to actually reduce the temperature in the bus stop. So we're looking into, um, using different coatings that can sort of make it cooler underneath. And of course, we also looked into, um, uh, airflow and making sure that there's proper airflow in the bus stop. We have a lot, uh, more space for the air to actually, uh, like come out of the bus stop because the problem with a lot of bus stops right now is that you have a roof that's just down and it, and it keeps that hot air inside. There's not really any way for the air to escape. So we also looked into that. And, um, the materials and paint inside, um, you would obviously want to coat the metal so it's not going to like, uh, absorb a lot of heat and really keep in there. So you would, you would want to sit in there. You would, I, you, yeah, it would be, uh,
Yeah.
consistent with most structures. It's not going to be hot to the touch.
I just would have wanted to create that heat island effect within that little zone. Um, the other piece is in one of your pictures, and it was really in the video, but right there. If you see the upper right-hand corner where the shade is, it's really further away from the bus area.
Um, well, actually, this is a program that we used. So this, uh, we call them renderings. This rendering here, um, the shade would not actually be consistent with the sun. We used a different program to run shade simulations, but this program is more actually just for show and just to sort of show off how it would look. Um, the sun is actually not accurate at all in something. It's more like a photo booth, uh, in this program. So, uh, to answer your question there, we ran shade simulations in a different program that is more accurate. We looked at different times of year. We looked in the winter, we looked in the summer, uh, we looked at different times of day, you know, and it runs that simulation and, uh, we got a lot of good shade at any time of the day, uh,
That's, that's, I mean, the heat, uh, sitting under one of those.
Yeah.
And the second one is the shade, to make sure that there is shade provided, uh, when we move forward on this dynamic. Uh, it's wonderful to make a great structure, uh, make it artistic, uh, but it has to, uh, meet the needs of our customer. And so I'm glad you guys thought of everything that we've all thought of as, uh, as we watch or sit or, or see what happens, uh, during the day and different times of the day. So really appreciate all your hard work. I think it's kind of exciting that you guys got to do this at this point and get this experience. Uh, you definitely are marketable for the future, so, thank you.
Again, thank you very much for participating in this and for lending us all your talent. Um, I think it's very exciting. I know Maria's been working on this for a long time. And so do I have a recommendation to approve, uh, staff's recommendation to us for the new design?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, you are winners. Brings us to recycling. Like this is Ginger Shell?
Madam Chair and members of the subcommittee, um, thank you for the opportunity to update you on our efforts to require, to make a recommendation to require multi, um, recycling capacity in new multifamily developments. Um, so what I'd like to start off with is thank you for your leadership and for challenging us as a Public Works Department to make recycling available to all of our Phoenix residents. Uh, we have our eco stations that are out in parks that are very popular, uh, in neighborhoods. We have our partnership with the Housing Department where we're making recycling available in public housing. So we want to thank Cindy Stotler for her partnership on that. Um, also, um, in existing properties, um, property owners, um, managers can actually give up landscaping to provide recycling space as well for containers. And then now we want to talk about new development. So we were here in May, uh, with our original presentation, and so we listened and we were very busy over the summer. Uh, we worked with stakeholders, we surveyed our residents. Um, and so we just want to come and let you know, uh, what our recommendation is and, and the feedback that we got. Um, before we move along in the presentation, I do want to thank staff who worked on this project. We had Rita Marco, Michelle Rodriguez, Matt Hamada, Brandy Barrett, Lucas Mariacher, Brenda Yanez, and Sean Young. And then the folks who led our effort were Assistant Director Joe Jades and Deputy Director, um, Jesse Duarte. Almost gave your legal name. But also I want to thank, um, the Arizona Multi-Housing Association, uh, with Courtney Levineus and Jake Henman, uh, for their efforts in working with us on this collaboration. So, um, with that, I'll turn it on over to Joe.
All right, good morning. So we won't miss an opportunity to brand our Reimagine Phoenix program, uh, with you. So Reimagine Phoenix, um, at a technical level is our effort to increase diversion in the city. But at a more strategic level, it's our vision, uh, the city vision, your vision, for thinking about our waste, not as waste, but in fact as a resource. Um, and we take the traditional view of reduce, reuse, recycle, and we add this new perspective of reconsider and reimagine that those resource, that those are resources that we were mined and made into a product that someone needed. And rather than simply burying them in a landfill, can't we repurpose those? Uh, and that's, that's the visionary aspect of, of our Reimagine Phoenix program that I want to make sure at every opportunity we can highlight that objective. So one of the strategies under that program is to work in public and private partnerships. The City of Phoenix does not currently serve multifamily housing associations either from a solid waste or recycling collection perspective. Uh, but we do have a standard detailed design that we publish to ensure that, that collection can be done in a manner that is safe, it's sanitary for the residents and for the property owners, um, and it can be done efficiently. And so in that standard detailed design is a mechanism by which we could partner, uh, to come up with a method to deal with multifamily housing recycling. So before I, um, cover the numbers on this slide, which is kind of a, a update from what we presented back in May, there's, um, um, just, uh, want to highlight again that this, this, what the standard details focus is. So we publish a standard detail that is a design for developers that comes into our Planning and Development Department when, when a new multifamily housing property is being built, that's reviewed, um, and we look at that design from the perspective of, and we lay out foundational elements, requirements as well as recommendations in there for the purposes of guiding how that design needs to be done from, to ensure sanitary, because we have to remember the solid waste program, our utility was designed about making sure, uh, we have sanitary collection in the city. We're so, but we don't think about so much because I think we do such a fantastic job of that, um, nationally, but it is our primary objective. But also that it can be done safely and efficiently. So these numbers, um, represent the new developments that have come through a fairly significant stage. They're, they're not all built yet, but they're at least, they've come in and talked to our planning department at a fairly, um, uh, advanced stage of design discussion. And there's 81 of these new developments that have come in since, um, since January of 2015. And what we've learned is about 78% of those without, uh, us doing this have indicated that they're going to be offering recycling containment capacity at those developments. So I think what's really positive there is there's a trend of new developments recognizing that the, the citizens that are going to be living in these, uh, these multifamily properties want this kind of service. And there are, the majority of them are offering it. Okay, so we did, uh, also hear from you about, uh, it, it back in May. Hey, what are the residents saying? Have you talked to them, um, and what are they saying? So we did go out and do a survey. We did that survey, uh, through social media, media, but we also, uh, did some in-person surveys where we went to libraries and other city facilities, uh, near multifamily properties. And we spoke with people who lived in the apartment complexes and surveyed them to get some feedback. We got a total of 800 responses. And again, we did target people that lived in multifamily housing. And thankfully, 86% of our responses were from people that lived in those complexes. And so there were some interesting findings from the survey, um, I thought. Uh, one of them, uh, although only about, I want to say about 45% of the survey respondents indicated that they, where they currently live offers recycling services to them, almost 90% said that they do recycle. And what I find really interesting about this number, and it, and it also aligns with a number that Recycle Bank, um, got from a recent survey that, that they did, about the same number, nine out of 10. What it really tells me is that citizens recognize that recycling is important, that recycling is something they should be doing. And, uh, you know, in this case, we got some really interesting responses. In some cases, they said they bring them to the eco stations. In some cases, they said, uh, a family member who has a home, we bring it to their house and put it in their recycling container. In some cases, they said, we bring it to work and we recycle at work. So people are looking for opportunities to recycle. And that's, um, I think that's a, a great opportunity for us to continue to advance the program. One other interesting finding, um, and I'm going to turn it over to Jesse after this, um, that we learned that, uh, through the survey, that convenience, and I think we knew this, so I would say we affirmed for ourself that convenience is really important to, um, citizens in terms of recycling. We got feedbacks such as having a kitchen container in the home, um, was really important to them so that they could separate their recyclables. We, we heard that the distance that they have to walk to drop off the recycling, uh, could be a challenge for them and they wanted convenience there. So it affirmed for us, uh, whether it's in our program or whether it's for our private haulers serving these kinds of complexes, that convenience needs to be a factor designed into, uh, recycling in order for it to be successful. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Jesse so he can share with you the news.
Madam Chair, councilmembers, uh, as Ginger said earlier in May, after we had our last meeting, uh, we really went out during the summer and really worked hard in trying to get together with all the, uh, all the private sector haulers and with the, uh, multifamily association and also Valley Partnership. What we did during that time is we started with, uh, actually with AMA, we actually went to one of their board meetings and kind of got feedback from all their board members during that time. But we also met with each one of those private sectors individually. And then what we did, once we went individually, we got feedback. And then we put a meeting together with all of them in the same room together to talk about, how can we move this forward? And talking about how, uh, we can look at the infrastructure and then also to look at providing recycling, not necessarily just from the multifamily developers, but also from the private sector haulers, the, the waste managements and the republics that were there. So during that process, we did a lot of conversation, a lot of, uh, analyzing on what goes on. We talked with the private sectors on how they even collect in other states, uh, you know, what they do there for recycling as well. So what we came up with, uh, through all the process, and I was thinking of doing a drum roll, but we'll go ahead and just go to the next one. Was what we did, we used the current, uh, procedure, uh, 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 language that we had right now. We added two more to it. And all it is, is the City of Phoenix requires recycling capacity for new multifamily developments. And there you go, it's requires. Uh, and then working with the developers and the private sector, we also came up with, in order to provide design flexibility and to help reduce contamination of recycled bins, multifamily developments may choose the location, capacity, size, scope, and manner in which to provide recycling. So we're going to work with the developers to allow them to kind of let us know, how do you want to work this? Uh, we're also working with them because we want to make sure that in the private sector with the, with the haulers, that it's, first of all, it's safe for collection and also it's efficient for them because the more efficiency that they get, the lower the cost it can pass on to the customer. Uh, and with that, do we have any questions?
We do have one card, Lindsay Robinson. Oh, there you are.
Hi, thank you. Uh, first of all, I'd just like to say I'm definitely strongly in support of moving forward with requiring recycling in multifamily apartments. I live in an apartment. I care about recycling. A lot of people in my generation care about the environment and recycling, as you saw in your survey. So it's definitely a move in the right direction, although I do think that it was a little bit overdue and probably should have proactively been implemented, uh, before the big multifamily boom. Um, I also would like to mention that I work with Stacy Champion, and she's out of the country right now, but she's watching this live. And she is very happy to see you finally moving in the right direction. And her and I also would like to note that we still believe that the ordinance that prevents the city from providing recycling for businesses and multifamily should be changed. Just a note. Um, and I'd also like to thank the Public Works team for all of their hard work. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. By doing this, do we have to change anything in the zoning department? This will cover it?
No, this, uh, we will not need to make any changes to the zoning ordinance or to Chapter 27 of the Phoenix City Code. What we will do is update our Public Works containment standard.
And I, I want to thank you because, um, you have talked about this for several years. And I know that, uh, as some of those complexes come through zoning, because of your influence, councilmembers said, you better have a space in that parking for recycling. So I think that might have helped, but I don't want us to take credit. It was because you kept telling us how important it was. Any questions, comments, or motion? Councilwoman?
Want to thank you for your hard work on this. When we did our My Plan Phoenix surveys, I believe this was the top thing our residents said they wanted, that we really needed to have recycling for our apartment and condo residents. We are moving forward today. It's an exciting day. Seems like it's a very flexible standard, so we'll see a lot of innovative ways to pursue the standard. But we'll be addressing one of the things our residents told us was a top priority. Sustainability is one of our core values at the City of Phoenix. It's part of our brand, and this is an important step for us, so thank you.
Councilman?
I just also want to thank you and I think your great comments by, uh, by both my colleagues, but my, the Madam Chair and thanking our staff. I want to thank you for all the hard work you put through this. I know Stacy Champion is watching live, but all of the, you know, Stacy has sent every one of us, I'm sure, email, uh, phone calls. I actually met the people at Recycle Make as an example through Stacy. Uh, but it, it's, you know, it's for everyone. It, this is, uh, something that's been needed, uh, and a need that, you know, we've known about. And I really appreciate our partners. You mentioned multi-housing, you know, it's always important to work with the industry to figure, uh, these things out as well. And, uh, and so here we are, so thank you. Great job.
So of course, I'd like to thank you guys. Uh, I was with you at the very beginning and appreciate, uh, being with you. Uh, I also like to thank Arizona Multi-Housing Association, Court I also like to thank Arizona Multi-Housing Association, Courtney Levineis and Jake Henman, only because I was able to speak with their members and be able to discuss what the future is, what it looks like now, how do we do, deal with older structures that don't have recycling? What, how do we, what does that mean to space? And how do we build recycling, if we need recycling bins, or possibly there are services, or we build within the multifamily housing, build a smaller space for recycling? It's just, they would have to take the recycling out sooner than later or faster. And so I enjoyed sitting with their members and having that dialogue and discussion. And so I think that was the beginning as to when we started to talk about the survey, and then we started to talk, who, what other partners do we need to have this discussion? It was a very, it's preliminary, and we were going to start, go to waste management and then on. So I also like to thank Valley Partnership, Alyssa Lyons, only because I know she was actively engaged. And so thank you for everybody, because it does take a collective to move forward, and it takes a variety of voices and people to be able to build a great community. So appreciate it.
So are you making a motion?
I move this item forward.
Second.
Do we have a motion? We have a second?
So Chairwoman Williams and members of the subcommittee, so this item was not listed for action.
Well, it should have been. I'm sorry.
I know.
Been anxious for this for a long time.
Thank you, yes. So again, we thank you for your leadership. We thank you for challenging us and providing direction to us. And so with your blessing today, we will move forward with this change, and it will take effect December 1st of this year.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work and dedication and time you spent on this. Good job. Next is called to the public, and I do have one card. Stacy Vanderwerf.
This is my neighbor. Good morning, Madam. Good morning, Madam Chair and councilmembers. My name is Stacy Vanderwerf. I'm a resident of Phoenix. In fact, I live in the Encanto Manor Historic District in Phoenix. And I want to thank you today for hearing my comments and commend the council in its work with Transportation 2050 and all the initiatives included therein, including making the city more bikeable, more walkable, more friendly to alternative transportation. Which brings me to the topic I'd like to bring for discussion, which is the stretch of Thomas Road between roughly 15th Avenue and 7th Avenue on the south side of the road, where there is no sidewalk. And I would also like to bring up the fact that included around that area is Phoenix College, is the Encanto Golf Course, Encanto Park, some of the most recognizable landmarks in the Encanto Village. And I wanted to just ask the council if we could possibly discuss implementing a sidewalk in that area. As it is today, where I live, on Thomas Road, right on the south side of the street, there is right now a private drive, which a lot of the pedestrian traffic uses, but there is no public right of way there. It's in fact a private drive. And so part of my comments today would be in light of that, to protect my private property rights to the private drive along the south side of Thomas Road. I do have some pictures, if that would be helpful. May I approach?
It's an area you know well.
So the first image that you see, the full-page image, shows the city's map of the property lines. The second image is in, from the 15th Avenue side facing east along Thomas Road, where you can see the end of the sidewalk and the beginning of the private parkway. I guess I could offer some solutions. I'm not a civil engineer. I'm just a member of the public. So whatever, whatever next steps you think are appropriate, however I might be able to be involved in those conversations, that's what I'd like to discuss.
Thank you. We will have staff look into this. I think, do you want to make a comment?
Yes. The area that she's speaking of is the area that I live in. I live on that private property drive. I have lived there over 37 years. And so I have gone around and spoken to the neighbors and have asked about, I've also pulled the crime rate around there.
Yes.
How long have you lived in that house?
I've owned the house for approximately one year, and I also do have some printouts of the crime rates.
So, yes. So I will take on this cause, since it's in my district and it's in my neighborhood. I have spoken to neighbors about this, and so we can, I will speak with Transportation.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more card. Diane Berger. There you are, hiding behind the post.
Yeah, had to lower it about three feet. Yeah, well, good morning, and it is a beautiful one. Yeah, I was just, I just came from Sky Harbor, and what I was thinking of is, you know, they have a high-security system out there, and, you know, apparently it is working. The way that they make it happen is, is the people are aware, and the city and even the employees, if they see things that are not right, they're to report it. Where I'd like to see it expanded into the public without becoming a surveillance state, but it's just an act of citizenry. And I mentioned to Dennis Smith at MAGA, see it, say it. Say something about, you know, if you're out around the buses, the bus stops, and the light rail, it needs to be reported. I know I was going to a D-Backs game several weeks ago, and right in front of us, a guy just broke the window, you know? And then I'm thinking, you know, wait a minute, did this guy really do that? So I say to him, and my partner's pulling me back, I'm saying, did you do that? Did you break that? The guy admitted that he did. I said, you're going to need to do community service while he jumped off of the bus. And, but I tried to get hold of the light rail. Tried to get a hold of the driver, totally ignored. Finally, when he stopped by the D-Backs, I told him what had happened, and I told him that you ignored my call. And the people then that took pictures of this rushed up to me. They said, oh, thank you for, you know, stopping them and telling them. Well, hopefully, maybe the police then had the data that they could catch this culprit another time. The other thing is, is that I was on the bus, and the driver was late coming out of Sunny Slope, and he didn't have a heater on. And the lady said, well, wait a minute, where is this bus going? So I says, either it's broken, the driver hasn't maintained it, or it is out of service. And so what I'm saying is, we need to make the system run better and have the people participate. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards we have. Next is future agenda items. Does anyone have anything? Very no, we would stand adjourned.
Thank you.